I need a motion to amend the agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Three, four?
No, I'm against.
Against, okay. Three, one. Motion carries. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
We need to read in the-
Oh, you got to read them in. Go ahead. Oh, then you do it.
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5VV, resolution authorizing the city property by personnel by Constant Dream Daydreamer Films LLC. Adding 5WW, resolution amending the budget for 2023 for salaries. And to the routine, we're adding a docket in the amount of $164,304.34.
Need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, four, zero. Motion carries. We're going to start off with the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome everybody to the last meeting for Christmas. And we wish you, everybody, happy holidays and Merry Christmas. And I hope everyone has a tremendous experience over the weekend. Now, to be brief, but I want to, you know, take a few moments, make a few points on what's before was the late add to the agenda. And that's the budget entry that will allow us to give a 5% raise in most cases and more in some cases. That 5% is part of a five-year plan that we looked at over the last two or three months in order to, first of all- comes to some of the positions that we, you know, we're struggling in vacancies and so forth. Let me note also that about 118, I think, sworn officers in the PD was taken care of in October budget. So this is a follow-up to about 470 employees. But one thing, I think, Councilman from Ward Two and Ward One indicated that part of the deal was to- the minimum hourly rate- budget and compensation schedule was $12.50. So about 110 of those folks were raised from $12.50 to $13.65. It's about a 9%. So of that 470, the 1.2 million will handle the rest of the employees, the city, you know, employees that we have, inclusive of some of the directors who haven't really been adjusted over the last few years. 21, 22 year FY year. And then, so when you couple the 5% and the 6%, plus, you know, maybe another 5% in a little bit at a time in the next four years, you know, that will present a significant raise in compensation. This is to the base salary. And so we're working out the details of adjustments to the compensation schedule. And that would be presented on the 27th, I think, right? As well as the approval of any adjustments to the directors. So again, part of a five-year plan that I think is reasonable. Again, the purpose is to take care of our employees. They make us what we are. We want them inspired and engaged. And we're going to do everything we can this year, as well as, you know, the next three years to make us not have to wait four, five years until it's an emergency. Some of the things that we made adjustments to base salaries in the police department, we're able to fill a lot of those vacancies that were hanging around, you know, over a number of years. And we're facing a similar thing in the public works arena and as well as, you know, different areas. So I think this is a package that we support and we're asking you to support. And, you know, given, you know, financial situation next, you know, in the next fiscal year and in the following, we should be able to provide a more steady increase in base, given the situation where, you know, you perform and you want to stay engaged with the city of Biloxi. And I know, I'm open for any questions or anything like that you might have on this proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that was pretty good. Dr. Tizell, you want to do it during your report? Let's do it during your report.
That'll be fine.
Okay, and, okay, we're going to move on-
That concludes my report.
That concludes your report. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. We're going to go to council reports, and I'm going to start to my right. Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start off by just sending our heartfelt condolences to the families of the slain officers in Hancock County, doing their job to protect, you know, the public and the citizens. And our hearts from Biloxi certainly go out to them. I also would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas on the holidays that are coming up. You know, the city looks good and, you know, we got some winter wonderland weather that are going to kind of touch us a little bit, and that's okay for the Christmas holidays. And I also want to acknowledge, we have the Gallaghers that are in the audience. Ms. Gallagher and her sons are here. They're just observing the council. They have an issue on the agenda. It's a first reading, and I'm sure they're interested in how we feel about it. But I did want to acknowledge their presence here today. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Dr. Tizell.
Mr. Mayor, in terms of what you were just speaking about and reallocated money and salary increase, to be clear, my understanding was that we're talking about a 5% less the sworn officers because they received a pay bump earlier this year. But also, your intent is, for the next four years, to seriously consider, and if the funds are there, to increase salaries again in future years, the next four years, at roughly 1 and 1/4%, maybe a hair less than that.
I think that's what has been kicked around, and, you know, not to promise anything, but that really is a part of a five-year look ahead, and I think that's sustainable and doable. And, you know, as you and I discussed earlier, you know, when it comes to, we should know whether the next year, the 24-year calendar, in about April or May timeframe, we'll know whether that 1.2 would be appropriate, you know, and be sustainable. So it's a moving target and to be assessed, you know, every quarter at least.
Right. And my hope would be that, because exactly a year ago, we were here discussing salaries here at the 11th or 12th hour, so to speak. My hope would be that we address these future years during the budget workshop portion. And what you said, I think, is key. You'll have an idea in April or May what we're able to do or not do, so that it would become a regular part of the budgeting process when we have our workshops and everything for the next year. It's Christmas time, and I was thinking, as I often do at this time of the year, what's the worst road in my ward? What road is it worse-
Yeah, a big ward, you know.
My ward. Well, I have a small ward. But that road is Spratley Avenue. And it would be nice if we could work something out with the county. Typically, we split the cost on these kind of things. But I just want to put that out there. And I'll mention it again after the Christmas holidays. But I just want Santa to be thinking about that. Seaspire is currently boring in Bay Vista, and they've hit a couple of water lines out there. One time, we had the good fortune that, so to speak, that it was under a boil water notice. So, you know, I mean, they were having to boil water anyway. But I know that continues to happen. And sometimes our records aren't the greatest over the years, or over the decades, or perhaps centuries, where some of these lines are located or whatever. But what if it's determined that it's the contractor that's doing the boring? Is there any consequence for that, for the contractor?
Send them a bill. Our force account labor- to take care of it, if we have to do it.
Yeah, in the past, we have done that. We, if we verify that, sometimes it's the gas company, sometimes it's Seaspire. If there's property damage, it's part of our trenching ordinance. It provides that they have to make good on that. There's also 811 statutes that do that. We've done that before.
So if I'm a homeowner, that's affected on that block or in that area where such a mishap occurs, do I need to do something along those lines? Or is the city monitoring these projects and they make note of that?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. So-
We have an employee that does, is 100% assigned to tracking all those various companies and subcontractors that are doing the boring. And he goes in the field, he inspects the work. He will withhold a permit if they have not completed one in one neighborhood before they move to another. And he orders rework if they make mistakes.
Right. He's in the engineering department, right? No, he does an excellent job, by the way. But I'm also thinking, as a homeowner, I don't necessarily have to report that. I can if I like. But really, when such a break occurs, then Public Works is notified. They're out there, I think, doing what they have to do to repair the line. At least they were the last time. We've had two of these boring issues just in the past week out in Bay Vista. But I understand sometimes what our drawings indicate where a water line should be is not always accurate, so that may be a point of contention. I was just wondering about the consequences. That answered my question. Thank you. Fiscal 2023 budget documents. Usually, we put revenue, combined budget, those kind of things. Any idea when those may be placed online for the public to see on the city's website?
I thought they already were. They were-
Well, as of the-
They were, the resolution approving the budget had those exhibits with it.
No, you're talking about year-to-date. Are you looking for year-to-date?
No, I'm just looking, which typically what we do is we'll put out the combined fund statement. Usually, it's an oversized page in PDF format.
When we pass, when you pass the budget, the resolution passing the budget, which is public, you know, it's out there for the public to see, included all of those exhibits.
Well, what I'm referring to specifically is on the city's webpage, they have a link for financial documents. And you go there, you can see the past CAFERS, they called them at the time. And in the most recent years, I think the most recent we have there is maybe 1920 and before that, 1819. And you'll see two or three documents of those that I mentioned. I'm just looking for consistency on that webpage. So if somebody's looking for the information, they can readily find it, is all. If somebody would look at that, if it's already- we could look at putting those documents at that location, just to be consistent.
Diane, it's actually for the audit. AVL has provided the last set of figures. So we'll make the most current to CAFER available online.
Okay, thank you. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And if you're traveling, just make it a safe trip, coming and going. And I would echo Councilman Glavin's comments, sympathy for those families in the community of Bay St. Louis with the recent tragedy they have had. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tizell. Mr. Demming.
I don't have much. I'm going to reserve questions regarding 5WW for when the, it comes up on the agenda. However, for the past eight years, I asked Santa Claus for a solution to Spratley. And I finally got one. It's now yours.
Well, so far, your plan is working. I'm trying to take care of it. Thank you.
I really have nothing else. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Newman? Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
We got all kind of good things happening in the city of Biloxi. Everybody be ready for the, wrap the pipes, run the water. The 20, when it gets down to 20 degrees, 22 degrees, everything will freeze up pretty good. So you got to be prepared for that. And I wish Robert a happy Hanukkah. We've got eight days of the lights. That's when he was freed from the Greeks, and everything was excited about that, right, Robert? And Merry Christmas to everybody else, the rest of the world, which is, everybody celebrates something. That's a good thing. As far as raises, what we're doing right now, putting this on the table for right now. Next year, we're worried about next year, next year. Whether it's 1%, 3% or nothing. You can't do anything about that. It's next year, we'll sweat next year. So I mean, right now, we're taking care of our employees right now. That's what we need to do. Because the people working in the city makes the city run. You know, we oversee them, but they get the job done. And they was on the street the other night. I went to their house. It's at 11 o'clock. They're out there working on the sewer. I mean, it don't stop. It's 24/7 job, a lot of these jobs. So I mean, there's a lot going on. And we have to make sure they're well compensated so the state of Biloxi can support it. And Nathan not here, but we rode the Walmart parade. It was a nice parade. That's a nice route. And had a nice crowd, so that's been a good thing for them. And then Ward Two had theirs. What, you going to talk about that again?
Yeah.
Felix handling that one. Anyway, he'll handle that one. I said, thank you.
Oh, that's all jealous. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. A few closing comments. Raises, again, thank you, Mayor. Working with the council on making sure everyone get a good raise for the holiday. I think that's going to be a great Santa Claus gift for all of our employees. I wanted to mention MLK, Coastwide Martin Luther King Group. You know, they were having a few issues. And what we've decided to do is do some in-kind stuff. Working with the mayor, the stadium was not secured, things like that. So we're going to go ahead and clear the way so they would be able to have they function freely and with the in-kind that the city is going to give them. That's going to be a good thing. I want to also mention Ward Two. We got rained out in Ward Two at our parade. So that didn't go off that well. But the Croc Center was so nice. I want to say thank you to the Biloxi Croc Center for opening up their doors. We had over 500-plus toys given out to all the kids. They were- and every child, over 500 children, got a gift. And we're talking about 40 or 50 bikes just given away. So I want to thank to all those who were involved, the movers and shakers, the city of Biloxi, the recreation department, and definitely those movers and shakers. That committee was awesome in that one. And I close by saying to all, happy holidays and Felix Navidad.
Mr. President, I just want to also acknowledge your attire tonight. And thank you for getting us all in the Christmas spirit.
Thank you, thank you. All righty. Okay, we're going to move on to public agenda, citizen comments. We have a total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. And I'm going to start off with anyone on my left, anyone on my left would like to come up and speak. Anyone on my right would like to come up and speak. I think there's someone with some brochures back there. Please sign in. Please sign in. And the clock will start right there.
Mr. Mayor, council president, vice president, council members, thank you for your time. My name is John Bolton. I'm vice president of Holmack Corporation. We're located in Bay Springs, Mississippi. You may know us a little bit better. We have had a good partnership with your city for a long time. One of our product lines is known as the PACMAC product line, right? That's your grapple trucks, knuckle boom trucks, and things like that. We've been doing business with you for a long, long time. And so as far as our company, we employ-
There we go.
Okay, sorry. Loud enough. Me and Kenny's from St. Martin. Normally, we don't need a microphone, but that's okay. I'll use a microphone.
For recording purposes.
So we're a company based in Mississippi. 800 citizens at any point in time in the state of Mississippi. In fact, we also have a business located here on the coast in Harrison County, known as Keith Huber Corporation. We build the big vacuum trucks that you see running around town. We employ about 100 people in Harrison County, and we have dozens of families that actually live within the city of Biloxi. So what we're doing today is we're actually announcing an event. I don't know if you have caught wind of it yet or not, but I'll give each one of you an invitation. So what we've done is we've tried to keep it local and tried to give back to some of the communities that we work with. And this year, we're hosting it in Biloxi. And what we've done is we've actually leased out the convention center at the Coliseum. We're going to be having this event on January 17th, 18th, and 19th. We have also logged all of our rooms at the Legends Hotel. So we've cut a deal with them to have a block of rooms set up. We'll have visitors coming from all around the United States, right? We believe that this event will have about a $350,000 impact to the citizens in the city, small businesses, local businesses here in the city of Biloxi. So we're really, really happy about that. We have a big VIP party that's planned. It's going over here at Ground Zero. We've actually rented out all of Ground Zero to throw and host this party where people from all around the country will be coming, a lot of successful business people. We wanted to give it exposure to Mississippi. We wanted to give exposure to Biloxi. You know, I'm from St. Martin, but Biloxi's close enough, right? So we're happy to do business in this community. And we just wanted to give you an invitation. It'll be coming up again mid-January. We appreciate your time. We appreciate being a partner with you guys. And what I'll do is right after, I'll go ahead and pass some of these out to you guys. If you'd like, you can register, attend the event. We would love to see you guys, and it's just a way of just saying thank you and helping support the community that helps support our company. So thanks.
Grapple truck.
Yeah.
And the back truck last year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolton. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? In the back of the room? Come on. He's already moving.
Freddie Fountain with Fountain and Associates, 1822 15th Street, Gulfport, Mississippi. We are, we have an item on the agenda. It's item D under the resolutions on the Reef Express gas station that was brought up at the previous meeting. We just wanted to ask today to have some additional time to gather all our facts and present to the council next week, possibly.
And that's E, resolution E?
Item D.
B? D as in, oof, oof. Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Subject to call. Okay, anyone else? Okay. With that being said, citizen comments are closed. We're going to move on to the policy agenda. Ordinance A, first reading. Carrie.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for a parcel of land at 12409 Lorraine Road for a change in zoning district classification from RS10 low-density single-family residential to neighborhood business.
Need a motion on that?
Moving for Nathan.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Ms. Newman. First reading.
Question. Mr. Creel, this includes a conditional use as well. Is that accurate? Or did I misread the script?
No, sir. What happened is that the applicant originally, this is 15 acres of land on Lorraine Road that abuts Road 248. And they're only proposing to use a small portion of it, just one area on the property for-
But it doesn't involve a conditional use, that's-
What we did, what we did at council or what we did at planning commission was recommend that RB, which is what they originally asked for, was just too intense for this area because it's surrounded by RS10 zoning. So the planning commission, on our recommendation, reduced that request down to NB with a conditional use rather than the RB as a use by right. RB would have opened the door for all kinds of commercial uses that were just not appropriate for that area.
So this does include a conditional use?
It does, yes, sir.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. And just for note, this was a first reading, so we're in the Christmas spirit, so we let it go. Ordinance B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for two parcels of land from their present zoning from agricultural to neighborhood business for property located at 4267 Ray Wise Drive and an unaddressed parcel.
I'll move it. This is actually in Ward Six, not Ward One, as it denotes on the agenda, but I'll move it. I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Mr. Glavin, second by Dr. Tizell. That also is the first reading. Ordinance C.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to the adjustment of the due date for payment of utility bills.
That was moved by Dr. Tizell, second by Mr. Lawrence. Dr. Tizell?
Yeah, all we're doing is amending the ordinance to give, to extend the payment period for utility bills before you incur a penalty, correct?
Correct.
That's all we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Nothing I have to do that.
Any other questions? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay, we're going to move on to resolution D.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize the establishment of a convenience store with gas sales for property at 2790 Beach Boulevard.
That was tabled on December the 6th. I'll move to table that. Subject to call. Second by Mr. Demming. Any questions?
I just have one comment. I just want to applaud the developers. We had quite a bit of debate at our last meeting on this issue regarding- how this went down and for them to look at their plan to preserve additional trees speaks volumes for their commitment to preservation and development in Biloxi.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Anyone else? With that being said, I'm going to call for a question. All in favor? Okay, six, zero. Subject to call. Okay, resolution E.
Resolution vacating a portion of unimproved public right-of-way for Tulia Court.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tizell. Any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Carrie, this is just like an adjustment to this piece of property.
Yep, this is a dedicated but unimproved piece of Tulia. There's no strategic value to it. There's nowhere for this road to be extended if we ever chose to. And the gentleman's been using it for years to park his boat on. So we see no reason not to vacate it. Utilities were all notified, and they were all in agreement, so.
Pretty simple fix.
Okay, any other questions? I'll call for a question. All in favor? Six, zero. Motion carries. Need a motion on a consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tizell. Mr. Lawrence?
On B, we're extending the maturity date.
Yeah, that was a $10 million credit line that we had. I think we're $700,000 into the remaining is where we are. And soon as reimbursement comes, we'll pay down whatever's reimbursed on the hurricane. Later, I think.
And on L, you got this listed as just compensation for the actual cost of action. So what do we, prices were changed, or we paid more or less, but? That's L. Like in Lama.
It was in Lama?
Lima.
Lima, okay.
Lima.
Less, yeah.
Yes, to reduce the amount of compensation that was allocated. Sometimes they'll have moving expenses that they have a certain time to turn in their receipts to get these expenses. And if they don't, then the amount we've allocated gets reduced. Okay, thank you. And on O, we rescinding a resolution. Do we have an adjustment for that resolution? Or we just rescinded it?
You're rescinding, talking about on the Coliseum thing?
And that's why I know, that's just in 356-22. A separate agreement has been reached between, with the county as far as making the funding for those improvements. So this has just been sitting out there waiting on the Coliseum to execute. But the county is going to, I guess, cover those expenditures. And on FF, this is the Walmart. You created a capital project. I thought we already had that in place. It says you're creating another, or you're extending one to the creation. That was the resolution number 1098. I thought we already had a 1098.
Which number, Count?
FF.
I think that's the extension to Shriner's, widening of Shriner's shortcut. Shriner's a shortcut road.
Right, we're asking, we're designing an widening of Shriner's between the stoplight and I-110- the stoplight and I-110, and I-10. So this is just the, uh, the start of the design effort.
Is this part of that new subdivision you extend?
No, 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 this is, MDOTs have some ideas that they're gonna redo the, uh, the roundabout on their side and then we're gonna improve the, the widening as well as tying into shortcut, I mean, Shriners Boulevard and Wool Market four-way stop right there and a little bit past that.
Councilman, let me, let me correct what I said earlier. We've got a lot of things going on in Wool Market. Project 1098 is actually a new water sewer extension in, in the, uh, in the Wool Market area that, that is referred to as Wool Market Acres. It's Tiffany Lane, uh, Boyett, that, that, that area where there is no water and sewer. You've heard that those people come here and talk about the fact that, uh, that they don't have any, after all these years, they have, they don't have any water and sewer. This is a six, this is a six to seven million dollar water and sewer extension project that that's gonna be the next phase of extending water and sewer into the Wool Market. But it starts with the design.
It's actually a water and sewer project.
And the last one is the KK with the Sanger. Is that, uh, are we finishing up? We still have work to do. Well, how much are we into that? The Sanger part?
That's the exterior. I think that's the, uh, the remainder of, of Black Lion's, uh, work on the Sanger. I think there's a little bit left from, from their contract on the, uh, the final brickwork and, uh.
Yeah, we're still waiting for the bricks to come in. They're gonna do the, 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 the brickwork on the front west facade. It was exposed when we pulled the, uh.
Stuck off.
And they're finishing up the canopy and they're finishing up the lighting of the, of the sign. All that's, is still, all that's still in the contract.
Yeah, that's six thousand, I think, the total is, remaining work.
All right, thank you.
Anything more?
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? L and M, M. Okay, gotcha. Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, a couple, uh, three things. On Item D, uh, we're purchasing a vehicle. And I'd mentioned earlier about solar power, uh, perhaps for a demonstration project using a city building that might be well-suited for a project of that type, just to kind of see what the investment would be, what the payback period would be and, uh, what the benefits of all of that are. But a working demonstration project along those lines, I'm thinking we're buying a number of vehicles. And some of these vehicles, if they're just vehicles we use around town, why not start looking at electric vehicles? You've got the Inflation Reduction Act, I think, which is gonna make some grant money available for things like that. Uh, we could probably partner with a number of entities. The first one that comes to mind is Mississippi Power. They had a high-capacity charging station there at CTA to recharge that bus that they use. Uh, so it's, um, I think we should be looking at that and perhaps next year at budget time, we might look at a couple of electronic vehicles, but of course you gotta charge them somewhere. But, uh, it, it, it may be worth a look and it may be worth having one or two, just to see how they perform, what savings are realized, those kinds of things. I'm sure there are companies out there that'll help us look at making some of those decisions. But let me just add this too. I think Brian, Brian Matthews at the VA has a number of the solar panels on top of their, uh, garage overheads, as well as some of the local vehicles, you know, bigger than golf cart size, but solar panels on top of it. So, you know, two different, you know, approaches to it. Not only the sol, solar panels that recharge, but also the vehicles that, you know, self-charges to drive around. So I looked into some of those, but not detail, but we, we'll, we'll get you some detail on where are possible places to, uh, put the solar panels to, you know, to, to actually get us some electricity off of it. I'm just thinking with the grants coming down the pipeline here for, for, uh, under that, uh, Reduction Act, it may be a good time to really start exploring some of these possibilities and, and utilizing one or two just to see what kind of track record they end up with. On Item JJ. And this is a tech question. Really, I was gonna ask Shane, but Shane is hiding and not here today.
Definitely can handle it.
So we have the A-team.
Definitely can handle it.
Instead, but, uh, I, I think we're looking at, uh, purchasing Microsoft Office email hosting. Uh, and I, I think that's to provide more security on that platform basically is, is what we're doing. I read about these cities being, what, held, held hostage, um, with cybersecurity issues and, uh, we have a pretty good tech team. I'm assuming that's what it's about. Is that correct? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Stephanie for her first appearance on the big stage.
So this is to end our volume licensing that we've been paying for. Um, volume licensing for Microsoft is sort of antiquated now. So when we roll over to 365, it'll, it'll save the city a substantial amount after the first year. It's just cheaper and better all the way around.
We could use that savings right there for.
Paving project.
Charge some vehicles with it.
Paving road.
I'm just, I'm just saying, yeah, pave the road. Okay.
Badly, right?
Thank you, Stephanie. Excellent explanation. Um, the last item really, I have a few comments and maybe a little discussion on this move, reallocating the money for the salaries. I would prefer, I think my colleagues are aware of my position on this, I would prefer that we not only move this money that we're gonna do today to, to pay for this salary increase, but I would like to see us make more than, than just a verbal commitment to an increase for each of the next four years so that we would, in effect, and I'm willing to offer an amendment, uh, to this item, that we would, uh, also budget an additional one point. I think, Mayor, and when you and I had some discussion, we were looking at possibly an increase of 1.24% for each of the next four years. But, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you know, we had used that number in looking at where we needed to be in, 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 in actually 2027. That would be the fourth year from, from here.
Right.
And looking at numbers and, you know, there, there was, there was just some numbers I had to run in order to be, uh, you know, to, to put the, uh, the results I wanted. I just used that. And, you know, given what we needed to do, you know, you're, you're, it's pretty significant as far as allocation of the, of the $70 million or so in budget, most of it is, is, you know, personnel services. Uh, you know, uh, as, as I discussed earlier too, I think 1.24 is, is realistic. You know, I'm not saying, you know, and ask me that question in six months and we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We're, we're gonna look at, at least the next two years. I think there'll be a municipal elections in '25. I don't know whether we're in a situation to, to commit to year '27, but, uh, you know, I'm open for discussion. And again, the, the main goal is to keep our folks engaged and, and, and incented to, uh, to perform. And, uh, nobody, I think, has a, you know, a problem with, uh, given financial, you know, situation to doing that. And I'm not, for sure. But, you know, I'm not ready to, you know, commit '26 and '27 to a number, but there'll be a number we can, we can use. I don't know whether at one point, that's just a number we use. I use to get the net impact of, of, uh, another 10% raise by, by '27, a total of 10%.
Well, I, I think, I think it's doable. I, I think, again, this is, I'm willing to look at it again. I think we should look at it again when we start budget workshops in July and August of next year. I think it's doable. I, I, I don't know that unless you make a commitment at that time, that will ever be doable, so to say. But my position is that we should provide some sort of salary increase that's sustainable annually to those folks who do a good job. And perhaps they top out after, I think right now we've got 16 steps, uh, on our, on our, or our, well, we don't even have the 16 steps. We have the pay bands. But I think we need to make a commitment to do that and budget that just as we would do anything else. I know, I know that there are some, sometimes some unforeseen consequences. For example, this past year, I think our, our, uh, energy bill, utility bills up about a million dollars. The other hand, it's a good year in terms of gaming and sales increase. I think we probably finished about five million, uh, better than we originally budgeted for. So that's not to say that we, we're gonna have a year like this every year, but I think roughly one and a quarter percent for each of the next several years would be fine.
Well, you know, given our efforts to, to put 5% in everyone's hands, as well as the future is gonna position us, we got a tremendous amount of vacancies. How successful we are between now and the next six months, you know, will tell us, uh, you know, what we have to, we have to, maybe have to do more to, by our position. But whole idea, we've got, you know, a number of vacancies in the PD, number of vacancies in, in Public Works. And so this is all, you know, one of the variables, I think we've got to, you know, weigh in, in massage, I think. But, yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just, I wouldn't be supportive of that.
You wouldn't go out, I would go out on that limb right now. You, you would not go out on the limb.
Right.
But let me ask, with the, with the money that's being reallocated, I think it's what, 1.2 million roughly?
The budget entry, yeah, 1.2 to accommodate everything.
And is that for, um, the current employees, but does it also?
It's part of vacancies too.
Okay, that's a good thing to know. But do you know about how many vacancies we have right now? Typically, we have, what, about 650, 630 employees?
604 on payroll, yeah. 600.
I know we don't have that many now. Do you know how many vacancies we have?
No, about 60, I would, but, hold on.
I mean, just in looking at salaries alone that we budgeted last year, we saved almost about 2.4 million just because we didn't have people working in those positions. But on the other hand, we had additional expenses, so that chewed up some of that. But I, I, I don't, roughly, uh, I'd be surprised if it was less than 60 vacancies. It wouldn't surprise me if it was as many as 80 vacancy. I just know, and that's fluid from day to day.
Let me, let me read, uh, this to you. This is based on, on 12, eight, you know, the finances that we pull. There are two in administration, two in community development, four in parks and recreation, 41 in the police department, 17 in the fire department, 19 in public works, four in engineering, and 10 in water and sewer.
41 in the police department. Not all those are officers.
No, not all sworn.
Those are clerical, but I think it would be fair to say that if there are 30 law enforcement sworn officers out there looking for a job, we're hiring?
Yep.
Yep. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavin?
That's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin.
You're welcome.
And I also have none. I'm gonna call for the questions. I'll take the exceptions afterwards. All in favor? Okay, six, zero. Um, Mr. Lawrence, do you have any exceptions?
None.
None. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? L, L, L and?
L.
Single L.
M.
And?
MM.
And MM. MM, correct. Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, no, the only other comment I have going back to 5WW, and I'll vote for it, is I wish we would, because I know we'll be having, uh, an item on the agenda next week on, on basically how to spread this money, if that's correct. I wish we had gotten that before we moved the money, but that's just a personal quirk. You and I have our personal quirks. Merry Christmas.
Not perplexed, are you?
Thank you.
Are you perplexed?
I'm, I'm in the post-perplexment phase. Thank you.
Okay, now that we just ended our discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
None? Okay. That being said, uh, consent agenda accepted. Okay, we're gonna move.
Item A on the agenda. Noel D. Antisich, zero Oak Street. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here for Noel, any of them? Anyone here?
Anisich.
Anisich.
None? Consider that matter clause.
Okay. Item B. Colonial Park LLC, 309 Moffett Road. This property's still in violation.